According to my watch, it's now 6:00 PM and I know that clock says 5:59, but we're going to go with my watch tonight. I'll call the meeting of the City of Carrollton Mayor and Council to order for October 5th, 2020. If you'll all rise and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilman Bridges.
Pledge of Allegiance, President of the United States of America, we are the republic, we are the same, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for waking us up this morning, Lord God, in our health and strength and our right minds, O God. O God, as you give us strength to lead this community, dear heavenly Father, with love, peace, and harmony, O God. That we would lead by examples, O God. That we would show your people that we all can be in unity and on one accord, Lord God. Because we are most powerful when we are one, Lord God. And as we go through this evening, Lord, lead us and guide us in all that we do. And touch every person's heart that is in this room, dear heavenly Father, and leading God them also, God. These are all of the blessings in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Thank you, Councilman Bridges. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and I'm going to read a reminder to you. A citizen's comment is just that, it's an opportunity for the citizens to address the mayor and council with any issue or concerns they may have. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, not to individual council members, staff, or citizens in attendance. Citizens shall make no inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates the rules of decorum will be asked to leave the council chambers. At this time, the mayor and council will not comment, nor the council take any action on the comments. We have dedicated 30 minutes for citizens' comment, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Citizens have to sign in, and we'll take their comments, and then, um, and we're going to take our Carrollton citizens first. And then if there's time left, then we'll take comments from people outside the city. So, Mr. Triplet?
John Ragland, 101 Turning Leaf Court, Carrollton. Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity that you give us to come and share perspectives. Uh, on, I've come several Monday nights, uh, first Monday or second Monday. And I've observed, and I've heard folks expressing a lot of criticism for you all. And I just want to affirm you and the council, I think you're doing a great job. I've found city manager, Tim Grizzard, is that pronounced right, Grizzard? All right. As, doing an excellent job of managing. You all are united, and I really appreciate it. I think in our culture today, uh, we tend to expect too much of certain institutions. We expect the school to solve all the problems in the world. We expect city or civic authority to solve all problems in the world. And I'm sorry, you don't have all the problems of the world right here. But you have important issues that are facing the city and management of the city. So thank you for doing a great job on that. And then one final comment. Uh, I've heard folks talk about the need for affordable housing. You know, I think the question, to get the right answer, you have to write, ask the right question. I don't think the right question is, what do we do to get more affordable housing? I think the question is, what can we do to get more people who can afford the housing? We need to develop people. We don't need to keep people down here and say, "Oh, you're poor, you're uneducated, you, you just can't do anything, and you're so helpless, we've got to come and help you." That's dehumanizing. We can help people. We need to develop them. So I'd encourage you to think in terms, and you already are, but I would encourage you to think in terms of a blue ribbon commission, business people, uh, church people, people from Democrats, Republicans, independents, all sorts of people coming together and coming up with answers to that simple question. What can we do to create more people who can afford the housing? Thank you so very much, Madam Mayor.
Jeff Jackson, Jeff Jackson, excuse me, 409 Cedar Street.
Hey there. I'm Jeff Jackson, 409 Cedar Street. I'm the rector of St. Margaret's Episcopal Church here in Carrollton. And I'm also the newly elected, uh, president of the Carrollton Ministerial Alliance. I come here to you tonight representing both my church and also the ministerial alliance, which, of which there are Baptists, Methodists, Presbyterians, Catholics, Lutherans, non-denominational, and many other Christian denominations in Carrollton represented. And the more that I communicate with sisters and brothers, lay and ordained, black, white, Hispanic, liberal, and conservative, rich or poor, the more that I find that there is something that we actually all agree with. That Carrollton needs affordable housing. And that we have a problem with it. St. Margaret's Community Outreach alone has spent over $200,000 over, for over 450 different families since March of this year, to keep people sheltered and housed, mostly in hotels. That's not to mention the tremendous work done by organizations like THS, Impact West Georgia, the Carroll County Emergency Shelter, and other churches and nonprofits who work, uh, who have been keeping a roof over people's heads during this time. The homeless in Carrollton are people who are largely invisible to middle to upper-class citizens. There are people who work full-time, some who work multiple jobs, some who have been laid off, some who suffer from physical or mental disabilities, many of whom who have children. I've not yet, one of, I've not met one of them who wants to be in their situation. They want to work. They want to come home to a place they can afford, and they want to lay down their heads in peace at night. They want to pray for anything else besides asking God where they're going to sleep next, or when they're going to get their next meal, or how they might climb out of the deep hole that they find themselves in. But before we can address any of the needs they have, be it education, or hunger, or any other issue, they have to have a safe, affordable, clean place to live. And COVID, of course, has only increased and intensified the need. I last saw, I saw last month how seemingly easy it was for city council to approve containers for our yard clippings. And yet to find a place for our people to live affordably seems to be an impossibility. I'm grateful that some of you are devoting time to learning more about this issue and seeking partnerships to find solutions.
Ariel Nix, 137 Glendale Boulevard, Temple, Georgia.
Um, in some of the conversations that I've been having, um, with city and county officials, the only offering that is ever given, um, when discussing Carrollton's relationship with racism is that there's always room for improvement and that there's room for growth. But I, and I guess others, I don't really ever see, like, evidence, um, that we're working towards any kind of solutions. Um, so when that's said to me, I often just feel like that's what I'm being told, what they think I want to hear. Um, but I just feel like if it was something that you were actually working on and that you truly and deeply cared about, then citizens would see, like, the results of some of, you know, action, like, we would see some proof of it. But nothing has changed, and I feel that maybe some of you don't even realize the depth of the problem. Um, and either you don't understand that Black Lives Matter as a concept, or you do, and you're just comfortable with where you're at and how you benefited from it. Um, you have a position of leadership in this community, you have a platform to make the changes. And as was just pointed out last meeting, I watched as you were able to explain, expend plenty of energy about, uh, food trucks and coming together over such pressing matters as, um, the tackiness of yard clippings. And found the resources to provide the bins for property owners to rectify the issue. Um, so I know that you have the power to come together and make meaningful changes, but I guess you just have to want to. And so I want to charge you all, like, if you really believe that there's a problem, like, come together, brainstorm solutions. We have a problem, it needs, we need actions.
Okay, that concludes our citizens' comments. So now we'll go to the mayor and council announcements, comments. Ms. Bridges, would you like to start?
I would just like to say that, uh, we are working on a lot of things in the city as a, in unity, and we'll continue to work in unity for everyone in the city of Carrollton. And I appreciate Chief Richards on the great job that they're doing, as well as the city, uh, councilman and mayor. And I really appreciate the things that we are doing in the community, and I hope you all will learn and grow, and see it soon. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, what a beautiful fall day it is. Thankful for this great city we live in. There are, uh, things being done in our community to, um, address the homeless problems that, uh, we can't really maybe discuss quite yet. But it's a, it's a problem that didn't happen overnight, and I don't anticipate it, it going away overnight either. But, uh, there are a lot of efforts being made towards that. And, uh, I'm thankful we live in a small town where, where we can, uh, work together to, to, uh, try to make things better for everybody that lives here.
Councilman Ledbetter?
Housing is a, a big issue for all communities. I've recently read reports out of Troop County and LaGrange and other surrounding areas about their, um, their challenges with housing and affordable housing. And, and, uh, I think the gentleman in the back that spoke first, I think you're, you're on to something when, uh, you say that we want to lift people up to a point to where they can afford. I, I truly believe that, um, there are people who feel like that buying a home is an unattainable achievement for them. And I don't believe that, I don't want to believe that. So, um, I would appreciate those in the community that have, um, background in mortgage loans or banking. Um, you know, coming together and trying to help solve that one part of housing problems is that there are people there who actually probably could afford to buy a house, uh, if they truly, if they just believed that they could. So, um, I challenge people in the community that have resources that are available, uh, people that work for large banking institutions, and for people in the mortgage business to get together and work on that part of the problem. Thank you.
Councilman Waters, if you don't have any comments, okay.
Well, I, I just want to say, and, um, that we are working. And there was, um, a committee that went out yesterday and did a survey, getting some information. But as Mr. Radisson said, and as Councilman Ledbetter said, and Councilman Ogden, this is going to take a joint effort. These people are not where they are because they have everything they need to get where they're going. So, we're going to have to look at what it is to help these people. They're going to need business mentors, they're going to need community support, they're going to need all of this. So we're going to have to come together, and as, as Councilman Ledbetter said, we're going to have to work with the banks, we're going to have to work with our businesses, we're going to have to work with our chamber to help us get these things in place to make these people successful. Because the last thing we want to do is to get somebody's hopes up and get them started, and then them fail again. Um, because sometimes that's more devastating. So, I know it may look like the people that we're not doing anything, but we do. We've had numerous meetings, um, with people in our community about what it is. Where do we, where do we go from here? You know, what's our next step? And every time we've talked to people, it is, you've got to have the community support. I mean, the five of us can't support the whole community in doing all this. So we're going to have to have input from the whole community to help us, whatever your specialty is. I mean, you know, if you're a retired business person, you know, just giving these perfect people encouragement. Um, you know, helping them, telling them where to go, how to go, uh, these kind of things. And, um, dealing with all of that, we can be successful. But we are, we are trying. And I mean, you know, but we've got to have the support of the community. And a lot of people have already stepped forward, and I appreciate that. Carrollton is a great place to live, and I, I believe with every fiber of my being, we're going to make this better for those that are less fortunate. And the other thing is, I just have a couple of things I want to talk about. Um, I was privileged to go and visit some of our facilities the other day. And, um, I mean, our, our water plant, our sewer plant, I mean, they are impeccable. Uh, we've obtained the status that so many people wish they could. And, and I want to thank Tony and his crews for everything they do. Um, because that's very important when we're looking at getting grants and when we're looking at getting loans. Um, we have a police department, uh, Officer Corey Payne, we just received an email, um, Chief Richards did, from the U.S. Secret Service. Our person here in Carrollton, Georgia, at the Carrollton Police Department has been a great asset for the U.S. Department of Secret Service in accomplishing things through evidence that they couldn't get done other places. And for a city our size to have the, the capability that we have, we're so blessed. And I just appreciate Chief Richards and all the officers that, you know, are forward-thinking enough to, to have us where we are. And I know that the mayor and council has provided funds for this, but, you know, I mean, this is over and beyond just doing their normal job. So I want to recognize them, and also, I get so excited every time I get an email that the flock cameras have helped solve another crime. And I, I got one this afternoon from Chief Richards where that the flock camera was able to assist in, um, solving a crime from Lowe's. And, and this time, the people were smart enough to take their tag off, so they couldn't read it. But because of our criminal investigation team and the flock cameras, they were able to still catch these people. So, um, I, I just commend them all for the, all of our employees for the job they do. We're, we're so fortunate to have the employees that we have here. Okay, let's move on to our minutes. We have minutes of September 14th. I'm sorry? No, ma'am, not right now. Minutes from September 14th and September 17th.
I think a motion would be approved.
Okay. Have a motion and second to approve the minutes from September 14th and September 17th. Any further discussion, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Mr. Grisard, do you have any announcements? Okay, all right. We have the approval of the agenda items for consideration. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda items for consideration?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. As we all know, we all face a drug problem here, not just in Carrollton, but in the United States, and each year, October 23rd through October 31st has become Red Ribbon Week, and you can't say that fast 20 times, I assure you. So we have a proclamation declaring October 23rd, 2020, through October 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week in Carroll County, in Carrollton, I'm sorry. It says, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education, drug demand reduction coupled with hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas Red Ribbon Week has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Kiki Camerian, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23rd through 31st has been designated as National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Betty Kason, to hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Carrollton, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Carrollton to be affixed to this fifth day of October of the year of our Lord, 2020. So hopefully, everybody will remember, and I know our police department's going to be working with our schools to make them aware of Red Ribbon Week, and so I hope that everybody remembers to get their red ribbon that week. Okay, Resolution 162020, food truck regulations.
Good evening. The first two resolutions on your agenda this evening both relate to food trucks, and so they, they sort of work in tandem. As you are well aware, currently our food truck regulations exist in our ordinances in our Unified Development Ordinance. And what has happened because of that is when someone wants to come in and apply to be a food truck court or to get zoning for a food truck court, it takes, it's, it's quite a lengthy process. We've reviewed what we were doing, we've reviewed what some other communities were doing, and we feel like we might can expedite the review process if we pull it out of the UDO, out of the Unified Development Ordinance, and we actually place those regulations in the Business License Ordinance. That keeps us from having to take it to planning commission. It cuts down basically on the process by about at least a month, depending on when someone may, may submit. You guys have reviewed this, the proposed regulations at length. The first resolution, Resolution 16-2020, is basically repealing the food truck regulations out of the Unified Development Ordinance. The planning commission did review this request because they have purview over the UDO at their, goodness gracious, it's been a couple of months. It was at their July 14th meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, their July, yeah, their July 14th meeting, and they recommended unanimous approval of this. So the first resolution that you will be voting on is to repeal it from the UDO. The next resolution I'm about to discuss is to actually place those regulations into the Business License Ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 162020?
I so moved the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Studdard?
All right. Resolution 17-2020 places the food truck regulations and the regulations of food trucks and food truck courts into the Business License Ordinance. As we discussed in your work session, you will review the locations on an annual basis of where these food truck courts will be located. The food truck courts themselves would be permitted, once reviewed and approved by the mayor and council, in the C2 Zone, the C3 Zone, the OI Zone, and M1 and M2 Zones. They will still continue to be excluded from the C1 Zone, which is our downtown district. The regulations, we've also reviewed at length, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about them, otherwise, I'll let you guys.
All right, do I have a motion for Resolution 17-2020 Code Amendment Food Truck Regulations?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is any further discussion?
Thanks.
Did, I see the fees change, is that listed on here?
The, the fees are not actually in the ordinance, the fees will be on the applications, and they'll be changed as discussed during our work sessions, with a universal permit and then an individual location permit as well. So someone can pay a little extra, and they would be able to go to any of the approved food truck courts, just as we discussed.
And I'd second what Jim just said. I think we did our best to listen to the comments of food truck operators in our town and, and make life a little easier for them, and still work with the restaurants that are here and paying taxes, and thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, Resolution 182020, Land Water Conservation Grant Pre-Application?
Resolution 182020, as we discussed at your work session a couple of weeks ago, relates to a grant application we will be submitting at the end of the month to the Department of Natural Resources. It is a land and water conservation fund application. It is actually a grant that we've utilized on several occasions here at the city of Carrollton, and we're hopeful that we'll get funding again. This application process is to part, and the resolution itself does not commit you to anything other than for us to submit the application. So the pre-application will be due in October, we'll find out in the spring if we are invited to submit the full application. As we discussed, we are looking to use this funding to make improvements to the Midtown Water Park, to the pool area over off of Alabama Street. I'm available if you have any questions.
Do I have a motion for Resolution 182020, Land Water Conservation Grant Pre-Application?
I so moved the resolution, 18-2020.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Erica. Okay, Mr. Grisard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item's, again, one we discussed in the work session. Periodically, we have flow monitors installed all over the sanitary sewer collection system in town. There's 180 miles of piping. When you hear us talk about leaking sewer line, it does not mean sewage is leaking out, it means that water, groundwater is leaking in, and we search for that all the time, and we work on the piping all the time. We spend about a million dollars a year on it, and that's why we have so much capacity and can accommodate industries when they come to town, and that's one reason our finances are in such good shape, is we, we manage this problem wisely. Every so many years, we have to put monitors around to see where leakage may have broken loose and started to come back into the system. Some of this piping has been in the ground since the 1920s, and so that's what you have before you. We've done, I believe this is the fourth time we've done a monitoring, flow monitoring study since I've been here, and I've been here for 16 years. This proposal is from CSL Services, we've used these people before, and the amount is $92,850, which is significantly less than we have spent in previous years. Also, there's a budget amendment attached to that, which would amend the water fund, the sewer budget out of the water fund to pay for this, and we have the money in reserves. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the proposal from CSL Services to do the sewer flow study, and also to amend the water budget to reflect the same?
I make a motion that we accept CSL Services to do the flow study and amend the budget.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Tim, why, why does this cost less than it has in the past?
Oh, that's a good question, but some of it is the, is fewer monitors. When we, the first time we did it, we spent several hundred thousand dollars. There was frankly less competition back then, too, to have it done, but it's the number of monitors and how long it's monitored, whether it ran months, or this, this study, I believe, is about, is it 90 days or 120 days, Tony? 90 days, so we try to go through a rainy period, they'll get it in, and the winter will have a rainy period, so, you know, again, we just got a better price this time.
That's great.
Thankful for it.
Have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have Miniot Flatiron Tax Abatement.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Miniot is the company that is moving in the Colorado Premium Building. As you know, Colorado Premium went out, they were a meat packaging company that came to town a few years ago. They went out of business and moved out of town, that building was open, and our development authority found this company, Miniot, which is based out of a suburb, or out of a, a city near Chicago, and as they do often to bring industry into town, they abate the taxes, which means over a 10-year period, they will either pay no or less property tax. So that is the agreement that's before you. It is a routine agreement, and the county has already approved this, so we're asking that you approve this tax abatement also.
Question?
I so moved the motion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, then we will award the tax abatement for Miniot. Okay, bid award, US, University of West Georgia Athletic Complex Detention Pond. Mr. Tommy?
Yes, ma'am, if you'll remember, we discussed in the work session, this is actually a project that is going to be financed under the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the University of West Georgia, in which we administer the projects and bid them out, and the college will finance that, the city will receive 5% for, for doing the services for that. This particular project was, university has five detention ponds around the university athletic complex that put in for stormwater when it was built. There hadn't been any maintenance for several years, so this project will actually entail cleaning out the muck and the sediment and tree and debris, debris in, in the ponds, and stabilizing the, the soils. The city issued an RFP, and we received six qualified bidders proposals. It was an RFP, so we looked at it, not only in just the low bid, but also looked the other, 50% was bid price, and 50% was based on the contractor references and their quality of work. The six bids, Triscapes Incorporated was $205,921.35, Wofford Earthworks LLC was $224,277.85, Carl Owens Construction, $280,000 even. Integrated Construction and Nobility was $322,442. American Contracting Grading and Paving Incorporated was $355,000. And RDJE Incorporated, or Ronnie D. Jones Incorporated, was $388,000. At this time, the city would just request the, the mayor and council to approve the bid to the Triscapes Incorporated at $205,921.35.
Madam Mayor, if I could take a minute, this is arrangement we've had with the college for over 10 years. They approached us years ago, and they had determined through their legal staff that if, that they could in, they, if they don't spend all their money by the end of their fiscal year, they lose it, they have to send it back to the state. In a way, with public bids, sometimes it's hard to get everything done by the end of the fiscal year, so they figured out they could encumber that money with us, and then they wouldn't lose it. And so that's what they do, they encumber that money that has, those products that haven't been done, and that money that hadn't been spent with the city. We make a 5% fee, and we bid and manage projects for them. We've done just all kinds of construction for them under this, and we've made 5% on all of it, so it's a win-win situation. And so again, as Tommy said, this doesn't cost the city anything, we actually make 5% on it.
Do we have a motion to accept Triscapes as the award for this project?
Moved.
Have motion, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tommy, bid award, University of West Georgia Little Talapusa Riverbank, River Stream Bank Stabilization.
Yes, ma'am, this particular bid was the same as the la, under the same concept as the last, it's also under the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the college, so it will be the same thing as far as the city, not, not costing the city, and we'll make 5% off of it. This particular project was to stabilize a section of the Little Talapusa. This section is north of the Coliseum, ties into the apartment complex, I think it's referred to as the Reserve off of Lovren Road, there's a footbridge that connects the two, and there's an asphalt path that comes up beside the Coli, University of West Georgia Coliseum. The stream is eroding near this footbridge, so this project is basically just to stabilize the soil to help, help protect the bridge from, from failure. We also issued an RFP for this project and received five qualified bidders. They were both looked at as far as the price and their quality of work. Integrated Construction and Nobility was $58,078.50. Wofford Engine Earthworks LLC was $71,272.75. Carl Owens Construction Incorporated was $82,970. RDJE Incorporated was $99,245. And side engineering was $114,300. And site engineering was one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And this time, we just request the mayor, mayor and city council to award the University of West Georgia Little Talaposa River Stream Bank Stabilization Project to Integrated Construction and Nobility in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Do I have a motion to award the bid to Integrated Construction and Nobility for the University of West Georgia Little Talaposa River Stream Bank Stabilization Project?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Next, we have vehicle purchases, police department motorcycle, we have Chief Richards.
We have a two thousand and eight Harley-Davidson police bike with twenty-six plus thousand city miles on it. We had the price, we asked for three dealerships, one responded, which is not normal when you're just purchasing one vehicle from them. Killer Creek Harley-Davidson in Roswell, we've purchased bikes from them in the past. Try for a twenty-twenty Harley-Davidson electric glide is seventeen, one seventy-seven with thirty-eight hundred trade-in for the oh-eight. We have the money budget for this, and it's consistent with what we have paid in the past.
And we do need a budget amendment, it's a paperwork issue, but just know we've got that in the package. We need a budget amendment to go with it, so.
Okay. What was, I'm sorry, what was the bid price?
Seventeen, one seventy-seven, and then thirty-eight hundred trade-in.
All right. Do I have a motion for the purchase of a police department motorcycle?
I so moved the motion.
Okay, we have motion, do I have a second? Have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And this will include the budget amendment in this motion also. All right. Moving on, Mr. Richardson?
Item number ten on the agenda tonight is for your consideration, the purchase of two all-terrain vehicles for the wastewater treatment department. These vehicles are used to inspect and maintain eighty-eight miles of spray lane out there on that site. These units still have life left in them, they're about twenty-five hundred hours each on them, and we will transfer these to other areas where we will be replacing units that are, that are worn out to have eight thousand-plus hours on them. So, you know, we're going to get to use these a little more, but we've requested prices from local vendors and received those, as you see them in your packet. John Deere Gator, we're eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents each from Sun South. Kubota RTV eleven hundred, eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents each from Beshear's Tractor. And our local dealer for the Polaris Pros did not offer them in a diesel engine, which is what we request, so we went to Adrenaline Power Sports, I believe they're in Newnan, they returned a bid of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-one cents each, and all of these are similar vehicles in comparison. We have the funds in, included in the current budget for the wastewater treatment department for this purchase, if you choose to allow us to do so. Low bidder being the John Deere Gator from Sun South at eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents each.
Do I have a motion to make the award of the bid to Sun South LLC for the John Deere Gator for eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents each?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, you got equipment purchase for a mini excavator?
The next item is for your consideration, the purchase of a mini excavator. We went to the state bid list for a price on this one, included in your packet from Yancy, Yancy Caterpillar, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. This will replace a nineteen ninety-one Case five-eighty backhoe that's used on that site. Again, this is on the land application site where they do the repairs to the spray lanes that we discussed just a moment ago that they inspect with the other units. This, this unit that will be taken out of service has served us well for a number of years, and it's just worn out. So we don't have multiple bids on this one, we just went right straight to the department.
You got employees born after that machine was.
Yeah, we do. We certainly do.
Well, I always think about what Tim says about how you will put stuff together with hanging baling wire to keep from having to spend money, so. I was just.
It works.
It works.
We should probably turn over the police Harley-Davidson to Mr. Richardson. Hundred, two hundred thousand miles.
I hear you, but as Joel's pointed out to me, when they go on a call, it doesn't need to break down halfway there, so. I could see wire hanging off that motorcycle though, where Tony tied it together, though.
Oh, and again, I say, Mr. Richardson and his employees do a beautiful job of keeping up these spray fields and just the home maintenance, and, you know, you don't think about going into a sewer operation and it being so clean, but it, I mean, it was awesome. I mean, you know, they, all the employees just do a great job of keeping the surroundings very presentable, and they didn't know I was coming either, so, anyway. All right, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of a new Caterpillar three-oh-five E mini escalator from the Georgia Department of Administrative Services, which is statewide contract?
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, thank you, Tony. Okay, Mr. Grizzer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to reappoint two of the members of the Parks and Rec Commission who, their terms are up, but they would both like to be reappointed, and they've done a great job, and they've certainly been recommended by the Parks and Rec staff. That would be Tanya Pittman and Ricky Walker. So we ask that you reappoint both of them.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Tanya Pittman and Ricky Walker to the Parks and Recreation Commission?
I so moved the motion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, is there any further discussion or any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.